A town hall is an open discussion from citizens. We open the floor for conversation. It's not a timed or a number, meaning anyone or everyone can speak. And there is no time limit as we have in the citizens' comments during our Board of Commission meeting. So again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Hall Meeting of July. These take place as we have a fifth Thursday in a month, which is probably four or so times a year. So thank you for joining us and we look forward to hearing from the citizens of Fairview. The floor is now open. You'll approach the podium and please speak into the microphone. We welcome you.
I was gonna say, somebody be first.
I just wanted to say, this is pretty short, so I won't take advantage of the unlimited time. It'll be shorter than my last comment. Our Fairview City Judge Election Event is now coming to a close. I encourage all voters to research the candidates and cast an informed vote for this position that truly represents the anchor of integrity, honesty, and fairness for our city. Your vote counts and we, the city, now more than ever, need your attention and guidance expressed by your vote. I know many folks have already voted and I encourage all citizens that have not yet voted to please go exercise this important civic duty. Our city needs you. I'm hoping our next election event in November for City Mayor and BOC Representative will be recognized as a stepping stone by the voters and embraced as an opportunity to usher our city into a new paradigm of success. We have a unique and wonderful small town. Our people, our friends, our neighbors, our business owners, and our volunteers all seek similar things. Sensible spending. We want effective and honest representation from our elected officials. We want responsible city growth based upon a thoughtful vision of Fairview that is focused on the long-term views rather than the short-term desires. Our proximity to Nashville and Franklin is one of our greatest assets of the city. It's convenience. It comes to us by luck and good fortune. However, our distance and our differentiation from Nashville and Franklin is an even greater asset and it will only be preserved with the thoughtful care and watch of our leaders. I would like to see us work smarter with more automation, clearer processes, and greater visibility. I'd like to see more of our city documents posted online to include a monthly budget report and all of the exhibits referenced in our BOC meetings. I'd like to see improvements to our policies surrounding our hiring practices and ethics. I'd like to see more debate and discussion on issues occurring on the bench rather than in the back room or the bathroom. As we move forward with our election process and our attention shifts from the judicial race to our city governance, I would ask our citizens to be patient and thoughtful in their review of our circumstance. What has worked well and what could be better? What could we improve? What could we do as a city to make our Fairview the best city in Tennessee? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We've got two of the candidates here for judgeship. I know they've been old all day long. Would it be appropriate if they wanted to come up and say something?
Town Hall? You're welcome.
There. There's Jim. I'll try. Move on.
Anyone else?
I'm Ron Rowe and I want to take this opportunity tonight to formally launch my campaign for Mayor of Fairview. And my theme is going to be focused on the future. I believe that that's very important in this town. I love this town and it has so much potential. I want to focus on the finances and the responsibilities that go with the finances. I want to focus on planning and I want to focus on economic development. That's very important because of the open space on 100 and it should be managed as far as the growth of that area. And a comprehensive plan is so important to this city as a roadmap for the future, again, focused on the future. And as a saying that I've seen so many times when I've dealt with planning and zoning is if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. I mean, if you fail to plan, you're planning to fail. And I think that's so important here. Also, I'd like to see and focus on parks and recreation because that directly affects every single resident here. And as a result of all of these, it's focusing on the quality of life for Fairview. And I can see in the future, and not too distant future probably, that Tennessee might say that Fairview is the most outstanding quality-of-life city in this state. So, thank you very much and I'm looking forward to sitting in that seat.
I'm Henrietta Hall. I live in Fairview. I've lived here for thirty-some-odd years. And my husband and I own a business in Fairview. And we've had that business for going on six years now. And I've learned a whole lot and met a whole lot of people in Fairview. And they all have ideas. They don't all want to stand up here at this podium. I know you all don't like social media, but not all of it's bad. I asked a question last week, or I guess it's this week. I posed the question, I said, "What is it you feel or think our city leaders should be focusing on in the next five to ten years to lay the groundwork for the future of Fairview?" And there were over ninety-five comments. And all of them, for the most part, were really good. And I know you don't like to look at Facebook. I sometimes don't like to look at Facebook. Can't imagine why. But I would say that all of the comments were positive. We need to do a few things. Some people were concerned about budget and making sure we have money in the coffers so that we can expand when we need to and not get into debt on things we can't pay the bills on. A lot of people would like to see more business move into Fairview, but carefully. And by that, I mean, a lot of comments were about planning. City planning. Thinking about where the places need to be. What is it going to look like if we have Taco Bell here and everything's up and down the strip? It's real spread out. And that's not to say that spread out is terribly bad, but it doesn't look as cohesive as a thoughtful plan of action. And I know that we have a plan somewhere in this building. I remember many years ago paying lots of money to have somebody do a plan for this city's growth. I don't remember seeing it in years. Of course, I hadn't always been watching, so I'm not going to say that's y'all's fault. But as a person of vision, I would like to see, I would like it put out in front of us more often, what the goal of you, the leadership of our city, is for our city. I need to hear it. I need to see it. Some people see things, some people hear things. I think it would be great for the whole community for you all to communicate a little bit more about what you want for this future of ours. And listen to what these people are saying. And I appreciate you all having this forum for us to come forward and speak. And I hope each and every time we do it, the more people are not fearful to come down here and talk. It is kind of scary, but it's not so bad. I think that you all have a really tough job. I appreciate you. I know it's tough to get beat up all the time. And all of you do. You've got to be. I've been beat up in the past week about things I don't even know what they're for. But if you are doing what you're doing for a good reason and you know that it is for the future of Fairview and the good of all of us and not just about what you want, whatever that might be, then it's for the good of all, regardless of what a few might say. And I'm sorry if you've ever felt that I didn't support you, because I have. I get frustrated with you, just like I do my kid, because he doesn't do it the way I want it done. And I ask you to forgive me when I'm impatient. And please, I implore you to use the people that are in this city that care enough to say something. Instead of being, or feeling like, people like Scott, you need to, you know, stay away from them, because he has a lot to offer that you all are missing. And there's a whole lot of people sitting over here the same way. And I think it would behoove all of us to care a little bit more. And I thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any prepared notes tonight, but I have a concern since the last BOC meeting when the fire chief came up and was asking for matching grant money. And during the conversation, the budget was talked about and he said that there's no way that he would be able to meet his budget, that he would be back asking for more money. The impression that that left me was that there's a culture of, I really, well, I know we have this budget thing out here that we had to put numbers to, but it doesn't mean anything because Mr. Johnson's not here to defend himself, but Stuart says, "Everything's okay. We've got plenty of money." But if the budget that we've been wrangling over these months require each department to underspend what they have in order to meet the goals, how is the attitude that, "I can't meet my budget. I'm just going to come back, ask you all for money," and I've been told that we're not going to cut any public safety items? That culture, that thinking, is going to have to be broken in order for us to achieve the goals that we want. All of these things that people posted, their wish list for Fairview, are wonderful. I applaud it. I want all of them. But if we go bankrupt and, excuse me, Al, and I know you don't like to have money just laying around, well, we don't. We need to change that culture, that mindset. So that's all I've got to say about that. Thank you.
Jim, you didn't sit in that glue, did you? I said, "You didn't sit in that glue, did you?" There you go. There you go. I sent all of y'all an email last week, over a week ago now, a week ago Monday. I've not got a response except, I did get one that told me, "I'm going to answer the question," but there was no answer with the answer saying that I was going to answer the question. And I just would like, I would like to have the question answered because I've seen us take a park, when the park board asked for the numbers on the Bowie Park Fund, for them to really be scolded, because they asked without standing. Nobody had, the board had not commissioned them to do anything requiring that number. And yet, we've got a tree board that goes in and, without asking anybody, even the park staff, goes and gets the state forester to come up here and make a recommendation without, not without your blessing, not without the park, because I know park staff did not even know the forester had been there. And then last week, we voted because of the recommendation from the tree board, or you voted, to go to thin all the trees on city property, of the pine trees, to the forty-sixty or, that may not be the right number, those numbers have gotten confusing to me at this point. But the thing is, is we just commissioned a forester to come up with a plan for these things. We just did. We're paying money to have a forester to come up with a plan and we're still going back to something that the park board, that the tree board brought up months ago. There was no discussion about it. There was no question about, "Why don't, does the forester got his report back?" It was just bam, okay, let's vote for it. And that bothers me. That's one of the things that bothers me most is there's procedures and when you don't follow the procedures, it upsets me. Usually, I don't care how you vote, as long as you follow the rules every time. The same rules for everybody, for every commission or board. Now, I know that the Planning Commission is a commission, it's not a board. It's different. It operates under different parameters. But these that you commit, these that you set forth, tree boards and things like that, they operate different than the commissions. They operate under your direction. And direction's not given and them take it on their self. Mr. Brusell told me one time, if I didn't come ask, that there could be a problem with it. When I asked him about the friends looking into some grants for some things, he said, "Run it by us first." And yet, the tree board seems to act very independent of this board here. They do what they want, when they want, and they make recommendations. They set for city property, but the only city property that's got pine trees thick like that is Bowie Park. So they have not only acted out your direction, they've acted in something that another board has, it's supposed, it'd be the park board. There was no, I didn't see anything that this had went back to the land trust to see if they approved of it. Did anybody check? We're going to cut the trees here, but we're not going to talk to the land trust? And yet, you have passed into law or whatever you call it, when you pass one of these ordinance, it's the rule now. It's the rule. When are the trees going to start being cut? Who's going to cut them? If they're not worth anything, who's going to pay for it? None of this stuff was thought out. None of these questions was asked. By not asking, we may end up having to figure out how we're going to pay for this, because we voted for it. And now, we're obliged to do something about it. And there was no discussion. And that's one of the things that I hear more than anything, is they don't talk about anything. We don't know what they're talking about. We don't know what this ordinance is. It's blah, 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 and numbers. Bam. What is it? There's no discussion. I do listen and I pay attention and I like the procedures to be followed. And if they're not, I'm going to be on this podium every time, every time. And I don't care who's the mayor here or who's under the mission. The procedures is why society works. It's why you work, is because we made the rules. Believe me, coach department will come see me whenever I get outside the rules, when I don't follow the ordinance and the rules set forth by this city. So it needs to be, the procedures need to be followed. And by the way, when he sends me a letter, it doesn't bother me, I clean it up and move on. I'm a contractor and I bring junk in. I'm sorry, that happens sometimes. But anyway, I would like to see that discussed. And I know tonight's not the meeting you can discuss it, but I would like an answer to that. When did it thinking? What was the thinking? And how does one thing that's a tree department get into the park department? I thank you for your time.
You want to speak? I will address Mr. Power, just because I believe if the public is curious about his question, it is deserving of an answer tonight. I see Ms. Jane Woodard, which is our secretary of the tree board, and the motion that was made back in March was made by the ordinance of what the tree board was formed by. I'd be glad to get you that information and your questions is sitting on my desk as I did email you, saying I've got your questions. I acknowledge your email and I will give you answers. Since then, I have pulled together the answers of why that was taken place, that the tree board is commissioned to be a watchdog, if that's the right word, of the trees of the community and the city of Fairview. And back in March, I was not present at that meeting, but it was discussed that the thickness of the lob lolly trees were advised by the forester, that the thickness was unhealthy. And in the ordinance of the commission of the tree board for the health of the trees in the city is where that began. Then it was petitioned and then it was discussed in the board in March and it was deferred because there wasn't enough information and because we were coming together with information from a state forester according to the land trust wishes as well as the requirements for our maintenance plan for Bowie Park. So all of that wrapped together is where the last vote came about. The questions you have are very, very good questions and very valuable questions. I do not believe that anyone ever had the forethought of that being a project moving forward and it being voted on in a monetary amount. It was only the health of the trees and the confirmation from the forester that they made that recommendation from the tree board. So again, I have some documentation that I'm preparing to send to you to give you why the tree board did that and what authority they had when that was done back in March. Then it was brought back up because the forester came back into the picture in the June or July timeframe, which is then the validation where that had been a deferred item sitting on the table, waiting for that document to come as a recommendation from the forester that the land trust has approved. Now, the information you also shared about the city manager doing the forestry plan that we voted on, due to lack of funds, that has been put on hold. So I've answered one or two, but I felt like I didn't want to just say, "Thank you," and you sit down. But as I said, I have more information to send you that hopefully will clear the mud of the questions you have. And they are very good questions and I appreciate you caring.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Can I ask you a clear and important question?
At the podium, that way it'll be recorded. Thank you.
Forester was to be paid for out of Bowie Fund. Is there no money in the Bowie Fund?
Well, maybe I misspoke. At that point, it's not been forwarded by the city manager and I'm going to let the city manager tell you the update on that project.
Overall, Mr. Power, I'm holding off on a lot of things that have been approved because of the situation with the budget. We want to get the budget clarified and completely out of the way. And then those questions that I've got to, been approved to get done, such as Joanne's classroom, we will move forward with those at that time.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, is that that, the state forester, although he said that the trees need to be thinned, he couldn't recommend that. He told us we need to get our own forester, if you remember. Even though he said that they need to be thinned, he would not officially say that because it was outside of something that he had authority to do.
Well, the recommendation that I read at the last meeting was his letter of recommendation that validated that and it was sent also to the land trust.
Okay.
As well as the city as a valid state forester approved by the land trust for that conversation. That was the request and why it was deferred. So we did get his validation in writing on state letterhead.
But what I'm saying is, what he said in the meetings and what I heard him say several times was that he couldn't do that. So now, he has done it and out of where, I mean, I'm sure you got, I'm not saying you don't have it in writing, but when he was here in the front of microphones, he was saying that he could not do that. I listened to the conversation. I went back and watched it a couple of times because I was very concerned with this issue. And the thing is, he said, "I can't do that. You need to hire your own forester and it needs to be a forester approved by the land trust." And it was going to be out of Bowie Funds, which now, I guess Bowie Funds is, I'm sorry, but bouncing the budget? I mean, I'm confused.
No, if you want to restate that, he just said he's in a holding pattern until we have the...
I'm in a holding pattern on a lot of items that have been approved because of wanting to get the budget out of the way. And the books are closed this week, believe it or not. And so, I just didn't feel it was right to be spending money with the crunch in the budget. So, some people might take it wrong that we spent eighty-five-hundred dollars on a forester. It might be thinking it is coming out of the general fund, when it would be coming out of the park fund. But so, rather than spend that money at this point in time, I felt it was wise not to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Don't I see you feeling better? Guys, I just want to come up here and tell y'all, I think, my opinion that it takes eight years to get a team together. That's just my personal opinion. But as a whole, as my parents have a motel right across the street here before Interstate Forty came through, Fairview's grown a lot. Beverly, I hate to see that you didn't try to rerun, but that's whatever's in your heart, you know what you need to do. I think you've done a lot to help support the city. I think Alan, when I first met Alan, I'm telling you, my first impression of Alan wasn't much, but I've learned a lot through Alan and the time that he's been in here. But as a team, once y'all pull together, I wish it could go further. I think Fairview's went from one point, I talked to Charles Sargent today, he said Fairview is fixing to explode and he looks for it to grow. And I'm well pleased with, I mean, I understand that the budget crunch and the budget fronts and everything is, a lot of money being spent, but I don't see Fairview going broke. I'm sorry, it's too many ins and outs. And I'm very proud of Patty. I mean, she's done good with it. I mean, you've all done a good job. I wish that, I mean, but you've got to do what's in your heart. But I think the city of Fairview is going to grow. I mean, I have my differences about, and we all do, of how you operate. And Stuart's not here to defend himself. Me and him probably debate more, we probably fuss more on silent, behind closed doors or whatever, but I mean, I just state my opinion with him. But I think all in all, this board's done a good job. I mean, look what we've got here. We've got Walmart and everybody agrees on some things. I think it needs to be spread out a little more, but I mean, that's y'all's decision or it's the public, I mean, the people's decision, but I honestly think it needs to spread out a little more. I mean, everybody said we got traffic problems. We don't got traffic problems here. It'd never be like Spring Hill. And the fireworks show man was great. I mean, I understand it was a little bit late, but I mean, I heard people all the way in Franklin, I'm Brentwood, I mean, I work all in there. I do maintenance for the county. And they're talking about the Fairview show, you know? To be a little town like this, to put on a show they put on, I mean, it makes you feel good, you know? And then, the only problem that I've had, you hadn't come to make my phone call, but the only problem is, was that time you went to the newspaper, I wish you would have came to our paper. But I mean, we're going to have those problems. But I really appreciate y'all getting Walmart here, whoever done it, the Taco Bell. Now, if we can just get a set-in restaurant, I know it takes time, I know it takes people, but my question was, I guess I can ask this question, can I? Do they have a survey that how many people goes through the park?
Yes. Keith?
Keith? Mr. Paisley?
We've got a...
I believe you'd be the best to answer this question. His question was, is there a survey or some type of number count system of who goes through the park?
How many visitors do we have?
I want to say next year, December, timeframe came to one hundred and eighty-one thousand people.
Is it two more?
Yes. We have a counter system, like a Wii counter.
I got you.
Comes across there and we take it every month.
Okay. Well, that was one of the questions I had was that, I'm hearing that, okay, well, we've got to have this amount of numbers to get old Charlie's or whatever, you know what I'm saying? But I mean, it's still coming, I mean, it's going to come, it's just everybody else thinks and faces it. But as a whole, I mean, look what's Fairview's done since y'all've been on this board. And I'm not doing it because y'all standing here. I mean, it's like I said, when I first, I mean, I've had differences with Mr. Hall, you know? But I mean, we're all going to have differences, different opinions, but as a whole, I think y'all've done a great job with what's going on. I mean, I could say, I could keep on arguing about, I don't like sidewalks, but I mean, that's just my opinion. But anyway, as a whole, I think y'all've done a good job. I wish that this board could stay together another four years, but I mean, I guess what you look at is, I guess you need to move on as a whole. I guess that's, I don't know, it seems like the president always gets elected twice, but... As a whole, I guess that's, I don't know, it seems like the president always gets elected twice. But that's your, that's your own personal opinion. I mean, you know, you know what your heart is. But anyway, as a whole, I think y'all done a great job. I'm proud of the way Fairview's grown. And I was just, you know, I wish people, when we do something good, just because we have a little misinterpretation, or a little bit of time lapse, or whatever, it is not going to fall right on time. You know, he told Joe twice, he had to tell him twice, be patient, be patient. So anyway, I just want people in the city to try to be patient. If you was, and I'm not saying I'm Fairviewing and don't want to get all that, but I mean, it takes some time and figuring, you just can't just boom, snap your fingers and have it done. So I really appreciate y'all's time, because y'all, this is kind of a part-time job, and most y'all work for a living, and it's not easy. I mean, I know, I referee, and every call you make's right and wrong. I don't care, y'all's decision, every call y'all makes right and wrong. You're going to make me happy, and you ain't going to make him happy. You're going to make me happy, and you ain't going to make him happy. So anyway, I just want to let y'all know, I really appreciate the time and the effort y'all put out, and all the headaches y'all have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. We do truly welcome all comments. If you have something that you'd like to share, that's an idea, maybe not addressing us, but an idea, we are always open. Many hands make merry work. Would anyone else like to approach the podium and speak this evening at the town hall? Last call. If there be no one else that would like to approach the podium and speak this evening, then I'll ask the commission if they have anything that they would like to say in our closing comments this evening. Ms. Your second?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, all the comments is very positive. Annie made the comment a while ago, is if you look back six years ago, and it wasn't just because of us, it was because of people in this city that was willing to work and do the things they did. Just sit back and remember what this road was, six years ago, when you rode down. And we had a used tool store, used tire store, a honky-tonk with a hole in the wall, and a fire department that was leaning over to one side. And just in that little space that I just talked to you talking about, we now have about two hundred jobs. You know, that's exciting. When I first came here, I wanted to have more jobs and keep taxes the same or lower. And we've pretty much done that, through the help of everybody that's here. So I'm proud of Fairview, I'm proud to be a part of it, look forward to it. And I always, I appreciate any comments moving forward. I've recently been a little bit sick, I'm feeling much better. But I want to thank the hundreds of people that sent me emails and phone calls to get better. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brazil? Commissioner Carroll?
Well, we have a new restaurant in Fairview. And I heard it was pretty much packed all day long, which is very exciting. Well, I don't know if it's a sit-down restaurant, I didn't go, but I had the nicest surprise. My daughter came by, and they called me, and she said, Mom, I got something for you. And she brought me the donuts, and was telling me about how packed. And you know, I don't know, it just, the excitement to see, like when Walmart opened, and then when the donut shop opens, and to see the town get excited and support business, you know? That's what we're about. I think our community, yes, we struggle, we don't always agree, but it's about the future. And it's about what our town is going to look like for our kids and our grandkids. And those are the things that are important to me. And I want to hear from you, just as much as my commissioners, and how we can make this a town that we all want to live in. I know we love it. I mean, I can't say everybody loves it, but I hope if you live, you chose to live here, that it's a community, you know, it's a place that you love, and you want to invest in, and make the future for our kids a great place. Because I want my grandkids to come back here. Thank you for coming, I appreciate your thoughts, and everybody that speaks, and emails and calls, and even Facebook messages us, it's all appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, and I want to just accolade as well the concern that you've shown by just showing up. And sometimes that's part of our diligence that we either take seriously, and part of our responsibility that we either embrace or we turn away from. So I do believe that us showing up is going to make a difference in our future. And I do believe that the ninety-six comments that I read, every one of them, it was a wonderful post Henrietta, and I believe the citizens felt that they were being heard. And I did not post, but I liked several of them. But I will close this evening with my input to that. My focus on Fairview, and my desire to see, and I have a few bullet points, is an infrastructure planning, an implementation of automated processes to ensure efficiency and compliance. Implement a budgeting process that is zero-based for all non-occurring line items. Review benefit packages to implement changes to current for the costly of our health plan and our benefits. Just ensuring that long-term costs are contained. Implement documentation policies on use of city equipment for having a responsible maintenance and fleet management plan. Develop a commercial growth zone with tax incentives. And working with not only WADC, but outside utility to prepare the eight forty area for commercial growth. Be objective, evaluate, and require to have forethought and vision. So then we, the citizens, can follow the vision of a great Fairview for our future. So I do appreciate everyone commenting, communicating, and continuing caring for our town, our city, our community, which is wonderful. And I believe when we say we can be like someone, I believe we'll be just like Fairview needs to be, if we'll pull together, work together, and look at it as the best little town in Tennessee. I appreciate your time, thank you, have a good evening.